In order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Councilmember, members Graziano and Atar, Robel.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
We will also pledge allegiance.
Please stand.
You there? You okay?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please go ahead and read the Sunshine Law.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice that this meeting was published on the Thursday, December 21st, 2023 editions of the Bellevue Times and Star Legend. The Sunshine Law was compiled with by adopting and forwarding to press, posting and filling with the municipal clerk the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each meeting. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the township website in Town Hall Building Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So first of all, I just want to welcome everybody to our council meeting, which happens to be Student Government Day, which is why if you're watching us on the live stream, or if you're here in the audience, the council looks a little larger than normal, so we are now all represented by student government, and so far, they've spent all day here. They started out the morning with the Township Manager, they have been a part of a department meeting, they've taken part of a mock council meeting, they are now taking part in an actual council meeting. Not only do council members have counterparts, but some of our various professionals also have counterparts. We're gonna let them run and kind of call the meeting for the most part, however, the business stuff that we still have to accomplish, because this is a live council meeting, we're gonna still step in and do. I do want to thank and acknowledge our state senator. Ms. Timberlake is present with us today. Round of applause for her, everybody. Not only is Ms. Timberlake here to join us for our council meeting, but she's also gonna be participating in our lunch right after this, and being able, a chance to formally speak to our students. So once again, Senator, thank you, and welcome to Belleville again. Okay, all right, so we're gonna go on with the business, small business portion of the council meeting. Today is our first meeting of the month, which means it's also our Council Caucus meeting. Various members of the council and/or professionals can put different topics on the agenda for discussion. We do have our department heads here, which is also great to see, and if any of those discussions include vendors, our invited guests are here. While you'll be listening to deliberations in and among the council and our professionals, unfortunately, there is no public participation during this portion of the meeting. If you hear something or see something that you do want to ask a question about, you most certainly can do so during the part of the meeting that is public commenting. So without further ado, our deputy mayor has put two items on the agenda, and I'll let him introduce the first one.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome and thank our student government members here. This is great, every year we love this. I hope this tradition continues. The first thing I have on the agenda is the Public Art Committee, which stems from, at the last planning board meeting, it was recommended to us by the board that we form an arts committee to, I was gonna say, regulate and give their suggestions and recommendations for public art displays, including murals, including statues, murals, any type of public art. So with that being said, I said I would put it on a work session so we could discuss it. I talked to the town attorney, I know he was looking into it a little bit to come up with an ordinance for us, something very simple, not looking through the.
Vinny, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
Chief, our meeting started four minutes ago. We were usually on time, we're usually on time for council meetings. Every other department head was here. Again, the meetings start promptly at 12:00, 12:30.
Yikes.
Should we, like, address that?
Sure.
The other chief says that the police department is the busiest department.
I understand.
Understood.
The business of the township must move forward, though.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, so basically, that's the gist of it. We're looking to do a small, a small committee, maybe three members of the public, possibly an art teacher, I don't know, we could, we could figure that out, but I don't know. Steve, did you come up with anything with that?
Well, yeah, so I, I, I looked into commission, committee, and I, I, you know, the rec director over in Bloomfield is a very, very good friend of mine, and we had some discussions as well, and they've found, because you'll see a bunch of murals around Bloomfield.
Right.
And they found that the advisory committee works.
Advisory committee.
An advisory committee. So we would establish it by ordinance, and then that advisory committee could, you know, using certain, depending on what it is, they can make a subcommittee on their own, you know, you may do something with murals versus something else, where different people have different expertise. And then that advisory committee, ultimately, the ultimate decision-making, though, would be with mayor and council. So if there was going to be a mural, or if there was going to be a statue of some kind that the advisory committee would vet it out, even to the extent of vetting out the participant, whoever's gonna do a mural, or who's ever gonna do a statue, or whatever it may be, then you come to mayor and council, and mayor and council will ultimately be the final arbiter in approval of that.
And I don't think anyone's looking to limit anyone's free speech with the murals. I think it's more, you know, give their recommendations, opinions, so maybe this one needs to be this size, maybe this one should have a plaque that explains it.
Do we, do we know, I was not, I do serve on the planning board with Councilman Graziano, I was not at this particular meeting. Somebody's phone is still on? I need everybody to mute their phones, please. I need that phone muted. Yes, we can hear.
It's loud, yeah.
You can, everybody can hear.
So I do, I was not at that plan, but do we know the origin of this, like, why this came to be?
I was not there.
Because I'm, I'm for one, not crazy about voting on art. I think art is.
I don't think we should vote on it, personally.
Beauty's up to the beholder.
I think it's, I think they, I think they should only be an advisory to give them certain regulations that they have to follow, and then it's up to.
I mean, I don't want to be a yes or no.
I don't want to, no, no, me neither.
Person for art.
No, no, I don't want to do that.
And when we get into opinions, well, we all know about opinions.
Right, exactly. Yeah, no, I think it's just kind of to regulate the, not the meaning of the artwork, but just the.
Cohesiveness?
Yeah, yeah, we want it, you know, to be certain locations, certain sizes, certain, you know, maybe an explanation under it or something, I think are.
Counting on the opinion.
Oh, okay.
Just speaking on, it's not working, oh, there it is. Just beginning on as an art student myself, I participated in two of the town murals. We have one on Main Street and the one on the four-way crosswalk by the middle school. I do think an advisory would be well advised because of the fact that there is little things that, as artists, we do have freedom of speech, and it's good and all, but we also do live in a town, so our freedom of speech, our interpretation may not be the well-versed interpretation for the rest of the people that live here.
So let me ask you a question, Councilwoman. Do you like the mural that's in our parking lot right next door?
Me personally, I do enjoy it, but as Councilman, I forgot your name, Cazarelli, said earlier, when we were muck in this meeting, having an understanding of the meaning behind it, because it is an ethnicity, is a former speech for Mexicans themselves, you may not be well-versed, so I do know older people in the town may look at it and be, not appalled, but a bit fearful of it. So having something like a plaque explaining what it is, because you have it for even monuments, when you have someone like a statue on a bench, you'll have a little explanation of what it is.
So I love the idea of the explanation. I will say that when that mural went up, a lot of people that communicated with me, they were split. There were people that hated it, and there were people that said, wow, Belleville finally got a mural, you know, we have now arts, and it was very good. I like it. The explanation is good, but my fear with the committee is wrong, two or three people on that committee, you might not have a mural like that, because they don't understand it. But the idea of maybe a QR code underneath every mural that then links to an explanation from the artist, and it could also be an educational piece, too. I'm all for the explanation, I'm just not necessarily for picking people to vote yes or no on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the idea of them voting no on the idea.
Well, you gotta be careful here, so, so I know you guys don't like that, but we're talking about public lands here.
Control.
And, and you can't, you, you have to control that, okay? We're not talking about private, we're, we're not even talking about what, what Agave Maria did here. That's a private building. Yeah, yeah.
We're talking about public.
Okay? We're talking about public. So like Councilman DePena said, Councilwoman DePena said, you know, in the middle of a street, that's something you should have some control over.
Okay.
So I'm not talking about regulating what people do on their private property, our zoning codes allow us to do certain things, and, and there are provisions in there in terms of what is considered signs, and so on and so forth. We're talking, it was my understanding that we were talking about, there's a difference between somebody coming from the planning board who is going to be building something that is gonna have some art, that's private, versus our public lands, our public buildings, and so on. So for instance, when you talk about Bloomfield, you have a, you know, you have a mural under a train trestle, that's public.
Right.
The, the artist should not be determining what should be on your trestle wall versus that artist, you know, having a wall in his house and, and, you know.
True.
Painting a small, so there needs to be some control in terms of.
Over the public spaces.
Public spaces.
Public, that's what we're talking about.
And I'd also add.
Okay, no, I think Vinny's, I think your, Councilman Cazarelli's talking about both, right?
Well, would it?
Because the planning board, it was my understanding, the planning board was talking about a, a private development that was going up and what they wanted to suggest.
Does that count or not? Okay.
No, but, but again, advisory board, advisory board in terms of even the private.
Yeah.
It would only be advisory versus something where it would have to come here and say.
Councilwoman DePena is, is ready to go.
She's on it.
If I may add, I think some of your concerns may be solved, if you're taking consideration. I don't know what qualifications you're looking for, for these people in this committee, but making sure that they are well-rounded in art as a form as itself, and also well-rounded in the town as itself, may help prevent that clashing in between the meetings.
I think we have our first resident.
I was just gonna say, right here.
Throw a hat in the ring for it to be on the advisory board.
Absolutely.
Just us to clarify, so we are looking to create an advisory committee that will then receive proposals of whatever might be done in public land, is that what we're, or is that something that that will come to us? We are voting on those.
Right, I think, right, that would come to us. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean receiving. For instance, if this advisory committee sees an area, for instance, along Route 21, right?
Identify, okay.
And say, okay, you know, that would be a great place for a mural. Advisory committee, can you look into that? The council, or, or a resident says, you know what, look at that, and then it would go to the advisory committee, and they would vet it out, and see whether or not somewhere.
I like that.
So we sort of did this for public space, I know Gabby's in the back there. We did this with some of the historic billboards that we were, the mural, and that kind of went sideways.
We, we informally did it, and I think this could.
By the church.
Kind of formalize it, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I think we're, we're good for this discussion.
Yeah, I'll put something together, and, and, look, I won't put it on first reading until I've circulated it and that kind of thing.
Do any council members, senior or junior, have anything to add to this conversation? We already heard from Councilman DePena. Vinny?
Nothing, nothing.
Mayor? Good, okay. Councilman, Deputy Mayor Cazarelli also has another item up for discussion.
Yeah, we, thank you, Mayor. In the past, we briefly, briefly discussed a couple, making a couple municipal properties historic through the Historic Preservation Committee. I'm kind of gonna default right now to Gabby, who's in the audience, I know she wanted to just say a couple words on it, because she could explain it better than any of us as far as grant purposes, as far as preserving our history.
I think we can do it together.
Yeah.
And it's great.
Go ahead.
Art and history go hand in hand, so we could definitely use this as a teachable moment. So, yeah, there are some properties that we could designate historic. But maybe before we get into that, because these are municipal-owned properties, and, you know, when you look at the architecture of the township, and again, you know, somebody could say an old person like me is historic, and these new young people are the newer things that are happening in town, and I think together, we want to recognize that Belleville has a lot of history, we have a lot of historical and cultural buildings, but one of the things we're recognizing, I brought up in October, I've only newly been appointed the chairperson of the historic, the Belleville Historic Preservation Commission, so rather than continue to, you know, walk in this line and, and get stuck, we are looking to apply for a grant, and it has been stated in your master plan, both dating back to 2009, to the newer one that was done 10 years later in 2019, and then the reexamination plan, your CME, your consultants, have suggested that a historic preservation element is missing in our master plan, and there is a grant that's always available every year to look at that, and under that grant, what we could do, especially for our group, to help and guide us and the governing body, is we could get a couple of things done. We could get that element written for your master plan under this grant, we could get an architectural survey to identify historic properties, which is what we're supposed to have, a list of properties, which we don't, and we could do a couple of other things, like just take another look at the ordinance, which I think the ordinance is fine and does say what it's supposed to say.
Yeah, I, because after, after Vinny, after Councilman Cazarelli asked me, I, I looked at the ordinance, and I, I believe it's fine for what needs to be done. I was unaware of the issue of the, I think you may have mentioned it to me, and regarding adding it to the master plan, and I think that's important, and we'll, we should get that done. Yeah, yeah, I think we need to get that done, and, and then the Historic Preservation Commission, the ordinance has, outlines exactly what you need to do in terms of that. I think, I think it can be done, it just has to.
Yeah, I just feel like we get stuck in having the grant, and hopefully get, being awarded the grant, because we don't know yet, you know, this is a process, for those of you who don't know, you know, townships don't have a lot of money, and when you ask for things to be done by consultants, it costs money, so when grants are available to get those things done, it's really great to have the support to go out and seek those grants, which we're doing now, we're working with the grant writer, we're writing texts and putting this whole package together. But just so that you all know, when, I'm just gonna quickly take Washington Avenue and the building that you're sitting in now, this could be designated a historic building, the library, the firehouse. So there's a lot of buildings that are owned by the municipality, because this is not, again, we're talking about privately owned, right, and, okay, and then can open up the doorway to get even more grants. And there have been quite a few grants that have been given to libraries, municipal buildings, and firehouses. In fact, a firehouse just received $750,000 for upgrades structurally and internally, and it's starting to include HVAC systems now, which is because our systems are so old and need to be redone, and, you know, these are all being included now in these grants. So I, I do think it's important to preserve and protect the integrity of these buildings, and that's all we really wanted to let you know, is that this was sort of the direction that our Belleville Historic Preservation Commission is headed. And, you know, with the Washington Avenue project, again, you're now allowing for walkability, so you would want to highlight some of these structures. Maybe the fire department on Washington Avenue would want to highlight some things that they do, and open their bay doors, and have some programs, and if you're a person that's, you know, walking around on Washington Avenue, you do want to enjoy these and have interpretive signage.
Our deputy chief is shaking his head yes.
Definitely, I mean, this is, you know, right here, you know, again, one of the biggest things is, part of the grant writing is, you know, are these public spaces, and today, having you here shows how this building does allow for programming to be done. So that can be written right into the grant that, you know, we're hosting a program here, or at the library, or at the firehouse. So that's my two cents.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Any, are you good, Vin, or?
Highlight, no, I loved her explanation, I, I'm on board with it, I would, I would like to, to do our, so basically, we have to designate our couple municipal-owned properties historic. It's just, I know, we're talking with Steve, the attorney, it's, it's a process, I don't know what exactly comes first, there's a form that has to be filled out through the historic committee, I don't know who fills it out, if it's a vote by the mayor or council, is it the town manager who fills it up? I don't know.
No, ultimately, the Historic Preservation Commission Committee recommends it and brings it here, so I'll go over with you, we'll go through it, if Gabby wants to meet with us.
Well, yeah, she's the chairwoman of the committee, so I think you could work with her directly.
Any council members, junior, or senior, or juniors, have anything to add, questions?
Comments?
All right, moving forward, we're gonna move on with the report of the manager.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the town council, I would like to start my report by sharing good news on real estate in Belleville. You may not know this, but as we speak, there are only 18 single-family homes and condominiums on the market, but at the same time, 34 homes are under contract, which will close in the next month or two. The news gets even better. Recent sales include a two-family home on Rocko Street, which was sold for $860,000, and a two-family home on Robbsmore Place that was sold for $825,000. Certainly, the mayor and council should take place, take pride in this community and this news, as a sign of forward and positive home movement in our community. For the members of council who deny the opportunity to attend this morning's meeting, department head meeting, meeting our project engineer, Mr. Paul Craig from Remington and Burning, provided us a detailed update on plans on park, where it has been moving progressively, and we hope to have a ribbon-cutting in July. We are working on the rollout for Belleville Veteran's Street banner proposal. We are hopeful that the application will be out in the mail soon. We are aiming to have banners in the township for this year's Veterans Day. The Belleville 2024 Summer Concert Series is almost complete. This year will be kicking off the series with a tribute to Elton John, also including bands such as Salsa Country and Old East. We are excited to let everyone know that our freestyle concert will include the amazing Judy Torres.
Wait, 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 we blew right through that.
Wait, wait.
Who's coming to freestyle?
The kids don't know who that is.
You guys know who that is. Does anybody up here know who Judy Torres is? Up here, I said, up here. No. Wow, Judy Torres, okay, so she's the headliner for Freestyle Night. Freestyle Night was one of our biggest nights last year, and do we have a second tier, a second act, yet, or no?
Anthony's gonna dance.
Suave. Suave.
Yeah, we tried, we tried.
TK is too expensive. Okay, that's a good one, thank you, Mr. Manager.
I wish.
Back to booth number four, always welcome to address any additional questions or requests.
Through the chair, I, I have a question. Yep. The Fairway Park, I know we've, we've been talking about that, getting that going, is that gonna happen?
I'm actually gonna hit it during my report.
Okay, never mind. No, no, let him answer.
If I do it, yeah, no, you, after me, in case I don't get it right.
Go ahead.
All right, no further discussions or questions?
Nope.
Outstanding, let's move on to the report of the mayor. So, we have a couple upcoming events in the town. So this Saturday, April 13th, we have Community Shred Day. It's a day at the Senior Center from 9:00 in the morning to noon. Following that, the next Saturday, April 20th, two Arbor Day events. Pick up free tree seedlings from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Senior Center, that's located at 125 Franklin Avenue, and from 11:00 to 12:00 at the Community Pocket Park, located at 321 Division Avenue. Come and learn the importance of trees, I know I'll be there, how to plant and care for them, and you'll receive a free tree at the end of the event, if there's any left. All right, supplies last. Registration is required for this event, and you can see the township website for any information regarding that. And to register, of course, you all better be there. The next council meeting is April 23rd, promptly at 6:00. Monday, April 29th, the Mayor Melham's State of the Township, which is located at Narinas, will be hosted by the Michael Melham Civic Association. Following that, 30th, which is a Tuesday, the Essex County Home Improvement Workshop is located at the Senior Center from 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at night. Saturday, May 4th, we have the Essex County Home Improvement Workshop, once again, at the Senior Center, however, this time, it is located, sorry, it is at 10:00 in the morning to 12:00 in the noon. Tuesday, May 14th, is our municipal election, so let's get ready to vote. Past events over the weekend, Essex County hosted their annual Cherry Blossom Festival, which featured a 10K race, the weather was beautiful, let me tell you, and there was a record amount of runners, so thank you to everyone who participated, means a lot. We also had volunteers which gathered at the community garden located at Fairway Park to work on the garden beds. Mr. Mayor?
Great job, Mayor. So just to round out the mayor's report, I wanted to just give the opportunity for, once again, I know I introduced her before, but we are privileged today to have our state senator, who represents us for less than a year so far, she's been a fixture in Belleville, attending many of our events. Senator, we have a microphone on this side, if you want. So, well, once again, everybody, our senator, Ms. Brittany Timberlake.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's really an honor and a privilege to represent Belleville, and I'm here in any capacity that you need me. You know, I'm very often impressed, as well as touched, to see the many different programs that Belleville does. I find creativity, as well as forward-thinking in them, and today's program is absolutely needed because representation matters, and when you can see yourself in the role of any one of us, you can be that, if that's what you want to be. It's something that I teach to my children, that they can be anything they want and everything that they want at any point in time that they want. So I have my son who is here, little Dmitri, who is six years old, it's spring break at his school, and I'm joined with, with Lillian Torres here, who was, yeah. She was a longtime Belleville, Belleville resident, and also a former school board member, so I'm really honored to have her to be a part of our team. But at the state, you know, we get to write laws that apply statewide, and that is a great responsibility and a great mantle that I will never take for granted, and we work very hard to improve your daily lives. Most recently, Belleville has received quite a bit of funding in the governor's budget. It's slated to receive. It has not, the budget has not passed yet, but one thing that I can tell you is that myself, as well as my district mates, are gonna fight hard to make sure that that money stays in the budget before it passes, so that we do bring home the bacon for Belleville. God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, one thing you left out, Senator, is that we have the youngest delegation in the state. And that's something for all the students here to kind of look, look up to and actually take it in, because it, that's no, no easy task, right? I don't know what your age, I don't want to ask a woman's age, but. Yeah, yeah, you brought it down, all right, so you better, all right, good, good, yeah, yeah. Right. Nice, absolutely. So that's really something for you guys to kind of keep in mind, too, is you don't have to wait till you're, you know, older and retired to get into the stuff, you could start now.
Very true.
Right, Mayor, Mayor Tom? All right.
So the deputy mayor made a good point, we do have the youngest state delegation, and prior to having the youngest state delegation, for all the women that are in the room, we had the only all-female delegation prior to that. So all the women that are in the room that are looking to vie a position in government at any capacity, you could definitely look up to our previous representation, and now those striving to be young and be involved can now look to our current representation. So once again, Senator, thank you.
Not trying, Mr. Mayor, she is young.
She is.
All right, moving forward.
No, I'm not done with mayor's report yet.
I'm so sorry.
Can I speak, please?
You can.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, so just to conclude the mayor's report with some updated news, I do want to say that not only do you see all the students here today as part of student government, but I have extended an invitation to them to all join me at the state of the township. Not only will they have seating at the state of the township, but I've invited them to my dress rehearsal. The dress rehearsal is really cool, because they'll have the opportunity to use a teleprompter for the first time, so I'll be working with their teacher to invite all the students, whether they're up here or just in the audience, for that opportunity. I also want to thank, I see DPW's represented, thank DPW for addressing Fairway Park, I was out there last week, it looked a little, it looked like it needed some tender loving care. I do acknowledge that it was five days of rain before that, but I did see some, some of our children and some of our coaches on that field, that was looking, it was in bad shape. So I do want to thank DPW for getting out there and cleaning up that field, it looks great. Speaking of Fairway Park, to answer your question, Councilman, we, I was under the impression that we were at the point of that park where we were bidding it out. Where we currently are in the process is plans are done, it will include a brand-new field, I should say a redone field, it's not gonna be turf, it's gonna be grass. We're taking the two ball fields and making just one, so it'll be a much larger field. That will be included in the plans. We have our community garden that will be expanded. Uh, we are out of beds, which is good. We tend to run out, so now that community garden's gonna be expanded. Another dog park is gonna be there, a brand-new playground, and as well as redoing the basketball courts that are there. So, that project is specked out, it's drawn, it's all ready for bids. However, it has to go to the DEP first. And once they sign off, uh, we can then spec that out. So, uh, Mr. and Madam Manager, if we do have an issue with DEP, if it takes too long, we will be calling our senator up to ask her to intervene with the DEP to kinda move things along a little faster. That's why we have good relationships at all forms of government, at all levels of government, I should say. Um, so that's Fairway Park. Uh, speaking of parks, I know our student government took place in a meeting today with our engineer for Plant Zone Park, which is right next to the number-nine school. Interestingly, to teach you that, the wheels of government spin very slowly. If you were here last year, I know our chief was, if you were here last year participating in this, you would've had a presentation about Plant Zone Park. This year, our student government team is still getting a presentation of Plant Zone Park, meaning it's not done yet. Uh, so it's been a year in the process so far, but this is how long projects take. So I know you participated in that. That's gonna have an all-accessible playground, uh, and as well as some other nice features there. So, uh, Plant Zone Park is on its way, Fairway Park is on its way. Speaking of our senator and the laws, uh, that they passed down in Trenton, I did forward. Now, that's my job. I receive a lot of the complaints, a lot of the issues throughout the township. Received an email over the weekend. I CC'd our actual chief on this one about ATVs and dirt bikes. The weather's getting nice, which means that myself, that's always on Washington Avenue, and Councilman Cosarelli, who lives there as well, are gonna be inundated with dirt bikes and ATVs and everything roaring through our township. I did receive an email from a resident complaining about that, and asking us why our police department cannot be involved in that. And I educated her that our police has a, uh, an order from the New Jersey Attorney General's office, which is a directive, to basically stand down. We cannot intervene. And, and so if you see that, students, with your parents in the car, if they're at an intersection and you see a dozen, or two dozen, or upwards of a hundred, like we've had, of ATVs and dirt bikes roaring past us, wrong side of the street, going through red lights, and you happen to see maybe a police car sitting there, watching it all happen, please understand, we are prohibited from engaging. And, uh, things like that are things that a local governing body like us, and we try and work with our state delegation, one, to let them know what's happening on the ground, because they represent us all in Trenton. Uh, we are the local represent, uh, local representatives, which is why when I get an email from a resident, and not only do I take the time to explain it to them, but then I do forward that to our delegation, so they can get eyes on, uh, what's going on at the local level here. And it's not necessarily a law that they could pass, because this is like a policy or a directive from the AG's office, but maybe if they get enough complaints from us and Bloomfield and some other towns they represent, they all get together and say, let's, let's figure out a way to tackle this situation. So, uh, again, it was, uh, another process, chief. The, the weather's gonna get nice, and I know we're gonna be hearing a lot of the roaring going by, and I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to maybe intervene in that in the near future. Uh, yes, sir?
I wanna explain the reason behind this restrictions.
I would love for you to do that. Chief, sure. We're gonna hear from our chief now on that?
I just wanted out there that we're not doing anything for no reason.
I understand.
Uh, protection of life and, and property is our number-one, uh, agenda for public safety. Um, driving an ATV on, on a, anywhere is inherently dangerous. Put it on a roadway, a highway, becomes even more dangerous. So just the fact that they're out there, it's dangerous. Now, to have a police officer get behind it and attempt to pull it over, initiate a chase or pursuit, the danger just keeps escalating, escalating. Now, that person driving the ATV probably will get in an accident, injure themselves, may even pass away and die. That's one thing. Now, you got innocent drivers out there that are in the highway also, and if the police initiate a chase, or, I don't wanna blame it on the police, the ATV driver initiates a police chase, now even the public becomes in danger. So, I don't wanna smash on the Attorney General, because it's really not in my best interest, but there's a reason behind, no, well, we need to know. The reason behind this is protection of life.
So, I would, I would, I would counter that, chief.
But what we do, we don't just sit by. We do try to escort them out of, uh, the township. So we do try and do that.
I, I would only add to that, that I get it that we're interested in the safety of the person, either on the dirt bike or on the ATV, but I also have...
And the public, and the police officer.
That's where I'm getting at. I have a township full of residents, some are elderly, that are walking the streets, and we've seen the video of them driving on sidewalk. Uh, we've seen the video of, uh, people being confused at a red light, not knowing if they should hit the gas and go, because there are fifty or sixty of these things driving the wrong way. I'm also concerned about the, the safety of our residents, and not being able to engage, uh, really hasn't resulted in them just driving through us into Nutley or back into Newark, perhaps. It has resulted in not one or two of them, but dozens and dozens and hundreds at times. So, it's not working. Standing down is not working.
I agree.
Better solution.
I agree, I agree with you. But I just wanted to get it out there, the reasoning behind it, just not, for no reason at all.
You have something to say? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had something to say.
I just wanna say real quick.
Yeah.
That has to do with electric bikes, too. I mean, that's just, that's a...
Um...
I've seen that, too. I mean, when they're in a...
Again...
Three or four people on a bike, that's nuts.
These are all new issues we deal with. I mean, the technology's always evolving, we're changing, we're getting new things. Um, and again, the state, and we have to deal with it, too. You know, it's hard. It's not an easy job being a legislator today.
There's no easy answer.
No easy answer, yeah. So...
Okay.
Okay, Buzz.
Uh, just to conclude this... Just to conclude the, uh, mayor's report, the state has begun a thirteen-million-dollar roadway project for Washington Avenue. It is going to be difficult, it's gonna be uncomfortable, it's gonna be a pain. They started, they stopped it, it's gonna go on for a while, so we have to just get used to be, being able to deal with Washington Avenue. Our farmers' market is coming. The farmers' market will be June second, Sunday, June second, through October twenty-second. It's gonna be every single Sunday from ten to two, up at the high school. And I do see on the agenda today that we are accepting a liquor license application for that, which means that there's gonna be an opportunity maybe for some local, uh, local ale and/or some wine up there, which is nice. April first, alternate side of streets sweeping started, as well as brush and leaf pickup. And finally, as always, the Junior Police Academy applications are out. That is a fantastic, uh, program. So, we're gonna have the mayor take over now for the next part of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Good report, by the way.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna go in with the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do, do I have a second?
I second.
I second.
You don't know the voices.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Just for the record, in the minutes that reflect both Councilman Graziano and Notari's absence.
Yeah, overall, and we all concur.
Moving on to communications. Madam Clerk.
General hold being making improvements. Belleville Farmers Market has received ABC approval for the annual seasonal farm market, and local finance notice must be filled out by April thirteenth.
Outstanding. Thank you very much. Ordinances...
That's only one? Was it all three?
It was all three.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was fast.
Ordinance, uh, we have no ordinances to report. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to public comments. Please keep in mind, there is a five limit, five-minute limit. Let's try to keep to that, please. Um, when you come up, your name, your address.
Oh, yeah. Very good.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I motion it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed with public comments. Oh, sorry, sorry, my fault.
You can say it all in favor here, right?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We are now open for public commenting. Mr. Hinton, just come, please, forward and state your name and address for the record.
Gary Hinton, three oh seven Fairway Avenue. It's nice to see all you young people getting involved with this, but it's very dirty. Very dirty. Uh, I'm glad the senator's here. I talked with all, all officials about the flooding problem from the illegal dumping in the Glen Deal Cemetery. I'm glad Tom Hertz here, because he's the main culprit in this whole thing. He was standing there directing all of the dump trucks, over a hundred fifty, uh, uh, over a hundred dump trucks dumping dirt along the riverbank illegally, illegally. I bring this to everybody's attention. I'm senator. You know, I've talked to you about this. Nothing gets done. No citations are given to the graveyard for filling in this land and directing this hazardous floodwater over to the residence area, making a life-threatening situation. You're waiting for a person to lose their life before you act on this. I hope not, all right? Uh, I, I don't know who else to bring this to. There isn't any entity in this state that I haven't brought this up to, and nothing is done. Eventually, you could go up there and see the land is starting to get washed away where they filled in, going right towards the casket, the, the graves. You're gonna see the graves floating downstream. You need to do something about this. You could, you just have to start enforcing the laws that you put in place. You put a law in place, follow through, and, and enforce the laws that you put in place. The dumping's been going on, I've been complaining about this for over thirty-five years, and nothing has been done to them. It's all for capital gains, so the cemetery could sell more plots, and I guarantee you that they're not telling anybody that's burying their, their loved ones there that that's a flood plain, and eventually will be washed out, and they'll be going downstream. Why nobody acts on this is beyond me. Uh, I can't, I just can't understand why you don't do anything about this. It's illegal, they didn't pull the permits. Tom Hertz, yeah, I'm glad he's here. I'm glad he's here.
Mr. Hinton, Mr. Hinton.
Do you wanna say anything about why you, why you...
Mr. Hinton!
He's here.
Mr. Hinton! I need you to address this body.
I am, through, through the council.
No, that's not how it works, sir. You could address us. You could keep speaking, just keep addressing.
Yes. I wish that you would do something about this. I'm never gonna stop, all right?
Thank you.
You're directing that hazardous floodwater directly to the residents causing a life-threatening situation. One lady come downstairs, her steps in the Bridgeburg Apartments, and almost fell into the, and drowned. Please, do something. Stop passing it and letting me keep going on and on about it, and not enforcing the laws that are in place. They didn't pull no permits for this, and nobody does anything about it. The government doesn't work unless they enforce the laws that they put in place. So please, I'm begging you, I'm begging you, please do something before something, some tragedy happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that's one thing. How many, how much time I got left?
One minute, sir.
All right. I was just putting my signs up. I'm running for councilman, so everybody knows.
Really?
In the second word. I just put my signs up on the public service property. I'm a, I'm a former public service employee, I'm retired. The hot dog truck that's sitting there gets up and whips my sign out. That's election interference. He comes out of the truck, I told him keep his chicken hands off of my signs. He comes out of the truck and he starts bumping me and wants to start fighting with me. We're looking for me, provoked me to hit him. I didn't. Called the police, the police came, and they told him to do... He's there, you have a law in town that any vending truck can, can vend in there. They buy a permit from the town and they can vend in Belleville, but they cannot stay parked. They have to keep moving, all right? Why is this here guy doing it? Because he's not godfathered in, because his father passed away a long time ago. They're allowing him to sit there when the other person who bought a permit can't, all right? And then he's got the balls to put signs up only by there for him not to park.
I do need you to wrap up.
Thirty-minute parking for the people.
Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
All right. So I wish you'd do something, enforce the laws up there with, with them.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. So before we move on to public commenting, I just do feel that it's, uh, some of the accusations warrant some, uh, some answers. And again, sir, your time is done. This is gonna be my time now to, to respond. So I just want everybody to know that, you know, when you hear things from the residents, it's not always accurate, and sometimes it's not even true. You repeatedly just heard that nothing has been done about the river. Uh, it's one of the biggest inaccuracies. I could tell you that I've been here for six years. I could tell you for the past six years, this governing body, including our directors, and state agencies, by the way, have been very much involved in the river. I've been in the river there myself, helping with cleanout. I know Ms. Gabby Bennett-Meady has had the high school students there in the river cleaning it out. That was just the easy part, that's easy to do. Uh, what we've also done, we've also contacted Passaic Valley Storage Commissioners. They have come by and they have actually de-snagged the river. They've been in the river, they've been pulling out weeds and pulling out trees that fall in the river. We've also done that. On top of that, what we've done is our prior delegation that I mentioned before, which was the all-female delegation, we had State Senator, uh, Ruais there. We also had our two Assembly people there. So when you hear residents talk about, "We aren't doing anything or nothing, it's done," it's just not true. It's not easy to get state agencies there, we've had them there. It's not easy to get high school students in the river, we've done that. It's not easy to get Passaic Valley to de-snag on their schedule, and they've done that. It's not easy to get a state senator and two Assembly people there. We've also had the DEP there. We've also had the EPA there. The DEP actually did some research into the cemetery and found out that there are no violations. I will say that they did issue one fine. That fine was for a couple thousand dollars, only because of a permit that was not filed right, like, ten years before that. So we've had multiple state agencies there. We've had our state senator involved, we've had our Assembly people involved. We've had our township engineer there, we've had our township manager there. I've been there multiple times. This is a federal flood zone, which means that if you live in that, in that, in that, you need to have special insurance, because they know that it's going to flood, because it's a federal flood zone. Nothing that this township can do about it, nothing the county can do about it. I really wish the state could do something about it, but there's really not much they can do, because it is a federal flood zone. If you want to buy a house there, the federal government will force you to buy flood insurance, If you want to buy a house there, the federal government will force you to buy flood insurance, because they know it does flood. Having said all that, we have reached out to many, many departments, state agencies, local county agencies, federal agencies, we've had them all on the ground there, because we do want to help mitigate it. When it does rain, we do talk to Bridgebrook Condominiums, and we allow them to move their cars, so their cars don't get flooded. But again, they are aware that they live in a federal flood zone, we have done a lot for that. We cannot change mother nature, and if the federal government deems that you live in a flood zone, there's very little this governing body can do about that. And by the way, I will end with this, because this is my time, Mr. Hinton was present for every single one of those meetings. So when you hear residents stand up here and say that, "We've done nothing," it's just not true. Now, he had, sir, you're, sir, I don't want to have you removed from this meeting today. You had your five minutes to speak, you had your time to speak, sir, I am now speaking. That's why you had your chance to speak, and now you're done. So I'm gonna conclude my comments with that, just to show everybody, including the students and anybody watching, that there is always a counterbalance to anything that's going on. Do we have anybody else for public commenting? Ma'am? No? I thought I saw your hand, I'm sorry. Do we have anybody else for public commenting? Yeah, I'm gonna ask, can we unmute the phone line? Do we have anybody on the phone line for public commenting? Going once, anybody on the phone for public commenting?
Going twice.
Going twice. I will entertain a motion to close public commenting.
I make a motion. I second.
I second.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. All right, with public comments closed, we will move on to resolutions, considering the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
I motion it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Madam Clerk, conduct the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yeah.
De Penya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Notary?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Outstanding. All right, gonna go ahead and close consent agenda. Regarding new business, is there any new business that any of the councilmen or women would like to bring up?
I think you're good, you have anything?
You're good. Everybody good? You're good? I am, wasn't me.
All right.
I do believe there is a.
The mayor has a new business, I'd like to go ahead and, I have two new businesses, if that's all right?
Sure.
I'd like to have a business to fire the current township manager. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Have a motion. Have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Outstanding. Mr. Township Manager, you are here by terminated of your position, have a good day.
Personnel, personnel.
I will say, I will say, I always envisioned that ending with the police officer actually dragging him out.
I have one more new business, it's to increase the police chief's salary.
How about mayor and council?
Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
And you have a coffee, Mr. Mayor.
I heard a second.
We could work the mayor and council into that.
We'll work it out, we'll work it out.
Senator, just so you know, we make six and $7,000 a year to sit up here. And it's well worth it, isn't it?
All right, thank you very much for entertaining that, moving on. Of course, of course, you still have your public servant salary, don't worry. All right, I'm gonna have a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion?
I motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You can do an all in favor.
Do I have an all in favor?
I.
The gavel, we're adjourned.